Debbie H. Schein, State Representative with the Board. Could we please come in front of the dais?
And Hugh and Debbie, if y'all will join us up here as well. The purpose of the Friends of Temple ISD Wildcat Award allows the district to formally recognize high-level partners, both individuals and organizations, for their contributions to Temple ISD. Nominations are submitted to the Board Policy Committee for review, and then the Board selects the nominees. And truly, this is always a special recognition, but tonight it feels even more special because it feels like we're honoring family. And Hugh and Debbie truly are not just friends of Temple ISD, but they feel like family. You guys are everywhere you're active, you always have been, and you always have prioritized public education for not just your own children, but for the children throughout this community. And you've always supported Temple ISD in profound ways. You're strong advocates and supporters. You've demonstrated your commitment through a variety of different advocacy efforts, both personally and professionally. And maybe one of the most profound recent examples of that support for Temple ISD is rooted in our recent land purchase. This purchase really would not have been possible without your foresight and your to require a portion of that sale to be dedicated to a future school site. And because of that, we are going to be able to serve even more students as we continue to grow. And so for always prioritizing others above yourself, which is something that can be said of both of you personally and throughout the community, we just thank you for being you. We thank you for sharing your family with us and making this area your home. Their children, son David and wife Morgan are here, and daughter Hannah and husband Ryan are here with us today. And again, it is the Friends of Temple Award, but tonight it does feel a little different because we feel like we're honoring families. So for all that you have done and continue to do, and I know you will do in the future for Temple ISD, thank you both.
Thank you.
Just first want to say, this honor is not just for what happened recently, but it's for over the time. Y'all have been such a component of TISD and of the community. And we just, this is a small way for the district to say thank y'all, to everything y'all have done and will continue to do.
Well, thank you.
And especially your effort in Austin on behalf of the public schools. That means a lot, too.
Yeah, I understand.
Yes.
So I would just say that Hugh and Debbie are probably the most community-centric people that we know. I mean, they live their day-to-day lives serving this community. We have seen a lot of politicians and spouses that you see them a lot while they're campaigning, right? And they even sometimes have certain values while they're campaigning, and then things change after they're elected. You may not see them as much, they may oscillate in their positions on certain things, but I will tell you, that is not the case with these two. You see them all the time, it doesn't matter when it is during the year, or the election cycle, or campaign cycle, it's just who they are. And their value system is very strong, and it doesn't change. They are unflappable when it comes to their values. Because they are one of the, they are two of the community leaders that guide me, I will tell you, and support the district, and help us in our decision-making. They do a lot, it's not just what you see, what you tell.
Hugh and I really feel that if we don't get public education right, the rest of it doesn't really matter. So that's why we're so committed to TISD and public education, because it makes a difference, and it's the foundation of everything that goes afterwards. So we're very honored. Thank y'all so much.
Yes, to say thank you is just, gosh, is just an understatement. But your leadership here with Bobby as the superintendent, Dan as your president of the board, and the board as a whole, y'all make a difference in our community. We have a great community, and it's a community we are proud of, and it's a community that stands out for other communities to look at, and as a mentor, you've done a very good job.
They're so excited.
They are, they're thrilled.
Grubs are fine.
That's right.
Ryan, you and Morgan, come on in.
I know, y'all come on up.
Wherever you'd like.
Well, and the investment runs in the family. David is very invested in the community as well, and I know Morgan is in school, but still is investing as she's doing her residency here in town as well.
Hannah, you mean?
I'm sorry, Hannah, sorry. Sorry, Hannah. And Hugh and Debbie, just to note, too, that that was created by our students. Yes. And so not only do they get to take the Wildcat tee home with them, but downstairs, you will see on our Friends of Temple Wildcat board that their name has been added to that as well to honor them.
Thank y'all for that and all that up here. Appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, yes, I just had to twist the arm just a little bit.
Item B is recognition of the national barbecue team.
Okay, let's see, we've got Reese, yeah, and y'all pull your, pull your stuff out, too. We've got Reese, Jordan, Anthony, Anthony, y'all come on up, come on up. Yeah, pull all your stuff out, let's, we want to show you off. Yes, y'all get right there in the middle. The Temple High School Barbecue Pitmasters team were named Reserve Grand Champion overall to finish in second place at their first national championship. Temple High School won Grand Champion honors as the first-place finisher in the Pork Shoulder category. The Pitmasters also added two more top-five finishes in categories by finishing fourth in Chicken and fifth in Skirt Steak Tacos. The teams also competed in Ribs, Pork Chops, and Dutch Oven Dessert with a cumulative score that determined the overall finish. Pitmasters qualified for the national championship after finishing 16th in the state championship in May. And this national championship known as "The Slab," which I think is just cool, was held on Monday in Hutto, and the awards were announced that evening. The five-person team is made up of seniors William Harden, Randy Perez, and Anthony Rangel, and junior Jordan Magana, and sophomore Reese Madrano. Temple High School culinary arts teacher Margaret Fife serves as a staff sponsor for the barbecue pitmasters, and Joe and Allison Madrano coached the team at practices and competitions. So the pitmasters were competed in the national champion, or national competition as part of, their part in representing Temple High School CTE program. So the great news is, we honored y'all earlier in the year, because not only did they place second in the national championship, but this is also their first year to even be in existence. They didn't even have this team previously. So we recognized you earlier in the year just for that, because that was incredible. And you promised, well, you kind of mentioned that maybe if you came back, you would bring us something to eat. So the fact that you won Grand Reserve Champion and came back with samples is so exciting. So we can vouch for, for sure, all of your efforts, and which are truly extraordinary. Just the amount of time and work, anybody that does barbecue knows that this isn't something that you just pop in the oven and it's done. It takes so much time and preparation, and you guys have dedicated so many hours. And so we are truly, truly so proud of you guys. And we just, I think Joe said, next thing is the big trophy. So I mean, I guess if you get second, the only thing to get next is first. So maybe we'll look forward to seeing that next year, but regardless, we're always glad to recognize you guys, and you're always welcome to bring us samples anytime you'd like. So congratulations.
I'll make a few comments and then pass it over to Joe, because I know he'll want to say something. Give you time to gather your thoughts. We are just so proud of each of you. I mean, truly. It takes, when you start a program, it usually takes several years to gain name ID recognition, to get yourself out there, much less to have the success that they've had. They've had the type of success that you see programs having after they've been around for like ten years. And so Temple was born that way. And it's hard to forget. And that's right, we're going to hold you back so you come back, but you did get scholarships out of this, like there was $15,000 scholarships per winner, I mean, check that out, per email, right? Besides all the hardware. So I mean, this was a difference maker, it just goes.
I bet he did.
We got back, we got back, too. We were actually tired of barbecue, and we wanted to, we just drove home to, let's go somewhere to eat. So I had the team, we went to Longhorn State Council. That's kind of where I lost my composure, because they worked their butt off. I mean, they cooked every weekend, and it was tough. And for them, and I was telling them, you know, they're at the restaurant, I said, for you guys to do what you did, I don't know if people understand the magnitude of what they did. They competed against the top 50 schools in the nation. I've been cooking competition barbecue for over 20 years. I know people that have cooked for longer than I have and never walked the stage. For these kids to get a Reserve National Champion, the very first cook-off in San Antonio, I told you I was going to come back to the state championship, I'm sorry, we placed 16th. But I'll take Reserve Grand Champion, the national championship, any day. And they took first place in Pork Shoulder, there were six teams from Missouri, Kansas, they're known for Pork Shoulder. We put Texas back on the map, that's where everyone was telling us, thank you for bringing that trophy home to Texas. So they really worked their head off. I can't tell you how much I'm so proud of them. And they had a perfect cook. When I say a perfect cook, everything just has to align right, the fire, the proteins have to cooperate, the sauce has to cooperate, everything is just on a timeline, and these kids nailed the cook. They did, that's our motto, nail the cook. Because competition barbecue is a crafty, it's, you're trying to please a palate of someone you don't know. So always tell them, if you nail the cook, cook it properly, everything else will fall in place. And what they did was just amazing. And today, I'm still, I just, I'm just overwhelmed with everything. And we have a bull's eye on our back now, and I'll take it, I'll take it. So we didn't get the national championship, we got Reserve National Champion, and we're going to try to get that one next year, so in 2024. So thank you all, Temple community, for supporting these kids, because it really means a lot to them, it means a lot to me. And I just, I'm just so happy for them, so happy for them. I just, sometimes I just, I don't have more to say.
Well, we appreciate you and Mrs. Fife and your lovely wife, and the parents that are here. Thank you for giving up the time that you, I mean, as a team sport, I know you're involved in it as well. I do have a shameless plug. They are getting rings, like football champions, basketball champions, and there's $600 shots. So if anybody wants to donate afterwards, we can help out. Are you marrying them after the time?
Probably not.
Anyway, thank you so much.
Probably not, but that's okay.
You sure?
No, I promise.
Okay, all right. And can we introduce the parents that are here? Students, introduce your mom and dad. She has a name. Thank you, and we have some other parents back there.
Oh, my parents. My mom, Yolanda, and then my dad, Adiolo.
Thank you.
And parents, before y'all go, too, y'all go help yourselves to the food in here as well before you leave, so make sure you get to taste that.
Well, thank you, we are very proud of you, thank you so much.
We're not going to cook on this either, this is going to go in the trophy case at Culinary Arts. We won that thing, you're supposed to cook on it, but we decided to leave it there for people to look at and say, look what we did.
I think this program's going to continue to grow.
Y'all are awesome.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Y'all are so great, thank you.
Item six is the Board President's Report, A, consideration for approval of the TISD operating, Board Operating Procedures Annual Review. And I believe that is the information that we have already signed, we've reviewed in our packet, and we signed the statement tonight.
For the executive session.
For the executive session, okay?
And are those passed to Monica?
Yeah, I think everybody at this point, I believe, everybody that's here tonight has already signed. We just need two board members, Monica, I guess you'll follow up with Linnell and Shannon Galloway. Okay, very good. B is the District Logo Refresh, and Ms. Parks.
Mr. Posey, we talked about me presenting from over here, so I can work the computer as well, so if that's all right, that's how we'll move forward. But just a couple of things as far as the district refresh. The last time we had a logo update in the district was 2015, so that's been quite some time. And kind of the average lifespan, if you do research on a logo, is about 10 years. So as with most things, we're a little ahead of the curve, but, and for a good reason. In 2015, we, I'm sorry, in 2021, we updated our motto, and that new motto that you guys adopted was "Your Children, Our Students, and Their Futures." And at the time, we decided to keep the logo as is, but just to change the motto. And now, after several years, we've just gotten to the point where we feel like maybe that globe was tied very tightly with our previous motto, and so it's time to do a refresh. So as we looked at some different opportunities for our logo for us, and your first decision point as a board was really about what is quintessentially Temple ISD. And after some conversations and discussions, the block T is truly what defines Temple, and it's what is us. It looks like us, it feels like us, it's recognizable across the community. One of the, there's about, there's all kinds of different research and different things when you look about, look up about logos and what qualities they need to have, but most researchers are consistent in five, in that when you develop a logo, you want it to be simple, you want it to be relevant, you want it to be memorable, you want it to be timeless, and you want it to be versatile. And so for us, when we really considered all those things, here we have the block T. And the one thing that I will note is that this isn't necessarily the block T that came off of the football helmets at the athletics field. The block T, and this one in particular, was redesigned and recolored by our department. And so it does not look, it is not the same as the athletics block T that has been used, it's a little different, but again, it doesn't compete with that. But this is truly, epitomizes Temple ISD. And so everybody in central Texas and beyond looks at this and knows that this stands for Temple ISD. So standing alone, it speaks for itself, but we have some different variations. Again, our next decision point was some options you guys considered about wording and phrasing and where those would be. And so this was the option that you decided on, and I just have it here represented, so you can see it in multiple different ways. And again, just to note, in the colored, on the colored, two colored examples, the block T always looks the same. So it's always red on the outside, a white, and then blue on the center. So it's always three-colored, it's not a transparent white on that background, the block T, it will always have those three colors. And of course, we have the just white option, which some projects do call just for a single color. So we have Temple ISD, Temple ISD is clear, it's the center of all that we do. And then we had some options as far as longer logos and what those would look like. So this is the mid-size option that you guys selected, and we have a couple of different things that we can do with this logo moving forward. It can look as above Temple ISD just as is, but then we can also incorporate our motto into that design as well. And again, using logos is all about size restrictions and shape restrictions on different projects, so we have some versatility here to use this. And then our last option is the long version of our logo, which does incorporate the full motto as well. And you can see what it looks like with the different backgrounds on the top two, and then you can see an example of how we are utilizing it with our departments, so that all of our departments now have their own logos to help bring awareness to their own departments. You know, Temple ISD is a pretty big district, and when you get something that just has Temple ISD on the top of it, sometimes it feels really big, and you're like, where did that come from, or how can I get help, or who do I even contact? So with our departments utilizing their department logos, it makes the district feel a little bit smaller and helps people connect a little bit more with the different components that are happening within the district. So something that would go out that would have this logo on it would be obviously tied to Donna's department, so they were like, oh, if I have a question, or if I need to know something about it, I know I can go to Human Resources and I can ask for that. So we are in the process of sharing these logos with all of SLT, and they are providing them to their department heads, and we hope to see them refresh district-wide fairly soon. My team has a list of places where the new logo needs to be updated, so we have been compiling that list for a couple months, and we're keeping a running list as we uncover things. And so in the months, the coming months, we will be updating those. The first district-wide piece of that that you will see is our visioning document that hangs in our foyer downstairs and hangs in all of our campuses. Those are being recreated in there at the printer right now, and those will dawn our new logo and motto. And it will also incorporate our leadership principles and work that we've done with Holdworth, with Holdsworth in it as well. So this is where we have come and where we've landed, and again, we will slowly peel away at updating all of these. The website is updated with the new logo, if you have seen that, but we will start working our way through all the different updates that need to be done. So any questions?
Members, any questions about this? I just want to say, Christine, thanks for all your hard work on this. This has been, I know, a long effort, and we appreciate you taking the time and dedication to do this, it's an excellent job.
Well, sure, well, thank you very much, and it's been a team effort. Eric and John have helped tremendously, and you know, this is something that's out there for everyone, and so we want to go, we want to be slow and diligent in the process, because we want it to be right, because again, we want it to be something that lasts us for a long time. So hopefully, we won't be back here for another 10 years, so.
Thank you. Item C is future items to discussion. Are there any items the board wishes to discuss at a future meeting? Item D is important dates and Dr. Ott.
I just have a few to review here. One is July 13th, and really want to encourage you to attend if you can, but that's the, excuse me, the Temple College STEM Program Closing Ceremony at the Temple College Pavilion. It's at noon. That'll be a great event. I think it'd mean a lot to the students and our staff that's actually participating in the event. They've spent a good part of their summer working this and standing up this program, and it's been a success, it really has. It'll be, it'll be a great opportunity. We have the Board Policy Committee meeting, the 26th. I also want to encourage you, if you have the opportunity, on July 27th, HR is hosting the Ignite Academy, that's here in the admin building. And that academy is for zero-year teachers, new to the, completely new to the profession, and just so happen to be starting here in Temple ISD. I mean, how wonderful is it to make the right choice that early in your career? But anyway, if you have the opportunity, July 27th, to come by, just swing by, and Donna will make sure you have the chance to introduce yourself to them, you can walk around, see what they're doing, and it'd be a great opportunity. That same day at 4 o'clock, we have the Facilities Committee, and then our Administrative Leadership Retreat this year will be off-site at the Holdsworth Center. And we were able to, I think, get all of it donated or sponsored, except for around, I think it was like $4,400 was the gap, is that right, Brandy? Something like that? Close, close enough for you to shake your head? Okay. So that's been, that's been a really good situation for the community and businesses to invest in us that way. We have convocation August 14th, that will be at the Mayborn Center. I know that you're used to it being at the high school auditorium, but it's getting a little crowded, so we're going to move over to the Mayborn Center to have convocation. And that same day, we have a board meeting that evening, so it'll be a full day. And then we have our School Board Retreat, it's a team-building retreat, August 16th, 8:30, it'll be here, it'll actually be in the, I think, pecan room is what we're booking, so be prepared to make a mess. And that's all I'll tell you about the team-building activity, it'll be fun. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ott. Item seven is consent items, items A through C4. What is the pleasure of the Board to deal with these items?
Make a motion that we approve item 7, A through C4 altogether.
Motion by Mr. Gaines.
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cook. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The light sign opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. It passes. Item eight, action items, A, Human Resources, Dr. Ward, no items tonight. Item B, Academics, Dr. Adams.
Dr. Rogers.
And Dr. Renata Rogers, congratulations on passing the oral exams and on your doctorate.
Thank you very much, thank you. Well, good evening, Mr. Posey, Dr. Ott, and the rest of the board. I'm excited to share with you about the Temple College STEM Program, which Dr. Ott mentioned. The closing ceremony is being held on the 13th, which is this Thursday. We've talked before about our partnership with Temple College in terms of dual credit, but this is a different type of partnership, and I'm really excited about it. And so today, oh, I am so sorry, but I don't know how to work this.
I will click for you.
Okay, I'll just give you a look, thank you. So I'm ready for the next one. So today, I'm going to talk about the purpose of the STEM Program. We'll talk a little bit about how it's structured for our students and the learning opportunities that they have, give you some insight into their schedule that they have each day when they are at the program, and we'll look at the student experience and acknowledge some special people that have been a part of the program. And so this is a mathematics-based program that is completely in the summer, and so the students will spend five weeks at Temple College. It's targeting high-ability students in the 7th and 8th grade, but we have the opportunity to also invite 6th graders to attend, and so we do have a couple of 6th graders that are high-performing that are attending this year as well. So this program is giving students the opportunity to explore STEM careers and STEM content areas. It's actually a program that's been around for about 40 years in the San Antonio area, and so we're just really privileged to be able to offer it to our students here in Temple. There's a heavy focus on problem-solving. There's a heavy focus on problem solving, and you'll see that in a future slide. And the classes are taught by Temple ISD teachers, and we have Temple College students who are providing in service, in classroom support and service to our students. I want to talk a little bit just about the, the structure of the program. And so as you can see, the location is Temple College. And so every day, Monday through Thursday, we have a group of about 24 middle school students who are going to Temple College, spending the day at Temple College, and kind of living the life of a college student. The program started on June 12th, and they will finish again on Thursday. A couple of details just about the logistics of it. This is at no cost to the students. I think that the, the cost in reality is about $300 per student, and Temple College received a grant, and they pass that on to our students. And so this is at no cost to our students. They have lunch provided. If they are riding the bus, they also have breakfast provided through our District Nutrition Program. Transportation is even provided. When Dr. Ott, Dr. Adams and I met with Temple College, we said, there's no way that our students are going to be able to get to a camp that starts at nine and ends at three when they have working parents. And so we reached out, as you can see, there's a picture of Holly Davies from Meta, and we reached out to her, hopped on a Zoom. So Dr. Ott snapped that picture, and she was gracious to fund the transportation for our students. And so this is truly no cost to our students. The only cost, I guess, is the at-home study that is required. And my son is an eighth grader at Bonham, and he's participating. And I will tell you, it is a cost for me and him. Because every night, he pulls out his notebook and asks to study with me. And so it's been, it's been a great experience. I'll talk a little bit about learning opportunities. Like I said, this is a program that's been around for 40 years in the state of Texas, and students actually have the opportunity to earn four high school credits from this program. It's the Texas Pre-Engineering Program, and students can earn a credit each year that they are engaged in the program. So again, they get to experience a college life. They get to impact the summer knowledge gap by keeping their minds turned on. This is not fun. It's fun, but this is not easygoing STEM camp type of activity. This is very rigorous instruction that students are receiving to help them move forward in their academic careers. They're exploring STEM careers. They're making new friends, participating in field trips, and gaining exposure to advanced math. And you'll see the pictures here are all our students and the activities that they're doing. I think this one with the numbers, they were identifying numbers zero through 100 that have prime number digits in them. So how many are they? How many are there and what are they? So problem-solving skills. Each group kind of approached it differently, but they all got to the right answer. So I want to talk to you a little bit just about the, the scope of the program. This is a four-year program. And so our students that are in the program this year are learning about logic and getting an introduction to mathematics. And so it's our hope that those 24 students will return next summer, and they'll get Year Two, which is algebraic structures and an introduction to physics. And I think that's really awesome, because our students don't generally take physics until the 11th grade. And so here, we have middle school students getting an introduction to physics. And then, as you can see, it progresses all the way to Year Four, when they're doing computer science and nanotechnology. Throughout all four years, they're getting problem solving, they're getting career awareness, research and study, and then again, the field trips and special events. And sometimes, I think this year, the field trips have been around the campus and looking at different departments within the campus that are STEM-focused, but still opportunities for students to explore. I want to show you really quickly the schedule that students have. And so they have breakfast in the Student Union at 8:30. At nine o'clock, they have their Program Start One, and that is their logic class. They get a little bit of a break, and so we saw them hanging out at the tables and the waiting, in the, in the free areas at the campus, and playing on their phones and laughing and talking with each other before going on to their next class, which is the problem-solving class. And then they got another break, and then there's tutoring. And remember, these are our most advanced students, and so for these students to have to or to need to go to tutoring is a good experience for them, because they're used to kind of making it through and not really facing any challenges. But this is really hard work. And so those Temple College students are, students are there to support them with tutoring. They go to lunch, they get more tutoring, and then the afternoon, they have an engineering class, and then they get a guest speaker or they do some kind of tour around the campus. So it's a very, very strong program and a great opportunity experience for our students. I want to show you a couple of pictures just from our visit. Dr. Adams and Mrs. Narrows, our bilingual director, went to visit a couple of weeks ago. And so we saw students engaged in problem solving and logic and working on their communication and presentation skills. We saw on the next slide that students were working on design challenges, and so they built bridges out of toothpicks, they built structures out of spaghetti sticks, and I think that they were just about to start working on airplanes. And then they also, as I, as I noted, they engage in that tutoring opportunity with those college students. So I, I read the other day that there was actually research done, that a picture is worth 1,000 words, but a video is worth over a million. And so we're going to show you a quick video that highlights some of the things our students have been doing, and also gives you a listen to the student voices.
I think that is going to like help me in high school with problem-solving class and
I think it'll help us because it gives us different ways to think about things.
I think it's really going to help me a lot in high school and stuff, because the logic class allows us to think different ways, and it makes us think outside of the box.
Like our PAs, because they're nice and they help us do tutoring.
It really helps because there's so many teachers in one room where if one person's busy, then the other person will help you.
It's a fun class. You get to build things.
And engineering, because you get to build things.
It could help us like know what pathway you want, like career you want to do.
Think on your own.
Communicate more.
For me, it's not really hard. It just makes me think in different ways.
I wasn't used to thinking like that at first, but then as soon as we like started doing it more and more.
And like the people and the things we get to do.
As the site coordinator, I think the Temple College STEM Program has been a huge success so far. Students really seem to enjoy being on a college campus, and they're starting to act like college students as well. It's exciting to watch them take ownership of their own learning, starting to collaborate together, form study groups, and develop new ways of thinking. I'm excited to see the future of this program and the value it gives to our students.
Isn't that awesome?
I love the, the repeated, I'm thinking in different ways. I'm thinking in different ways. And so again, I'm just grateful to TC for thinking of us and considering us for that partnership. I want to take a moment to acknowledge a few people that you may have noticed in the video. Again, we have our Temple ISD staff that is supporting this program. And so TC has provided their facilities, they provided the curriculum, but they asked specifically for our teachers and our staff to, to support our students and to be with our students. So we have Rosie Perez, who's a math teacher at Bonham Middle School, and she teaches the logic course. We have Vatna Gularia, who is a physics teacher at Temple High School, and she's teaching the engineering course. And then we have Michael Marick, who is a digital learning coach, and he kind of puts everything together, coordinates the speakers, the banquet that Dr. Ott told you about. He's our site coordinator for the program. So that concludes my presentation. I just want to remind you about the closing ceremony this Thursday at 12 o'clock in the Leopard Room at Temple College. Are there any questions?
Any questions, members? I just want to say, this is a wonderful opportunity for these students. Yeah, it's just, it's amazing what they're getting out of this at that age.
It is. I don't think, I told my son, I don't think that you realize the opportunity that you have right now, but.
Yeah. Getting this type of, and I assume they're all, from the video, everybody's engaged and just putting them that far ahead.
Right. Absolutely.
But also too, the idea we can do this with our incredible partners, Temple College, Meta stepping up, that's just another part of our teamwork here in our community.
Yes, absolutely.
It's all for the kids.
The power of partnerships.
Yeah. Well, great. Well, thank you very much. It's a great video, too.
Thank you.
Yeah. Item two, consideration for approval of interlocal agreement between the University of Texas at Austin and Temple ISD for the 2023, 2024 year OnRamps Program. Dr. Rogers.
More exciting things to share with you. I think that you're aware of the, the direction that we're moving in trying to increase opportunities for students to earn dual credit while they're at Temple High School. And so OnRamps provides that opportunity for our students who might not otherwise take advantage of a dual credit course. And so just a little background about OnRamps, so that you know the difference between OnRamps and the dual credit that we're still going to continue to do with Temple College. OnRamps really supports students in a different way. And so the first way that I see that support is that it doesn't require students to pass the TSIA, which is a requirement for Temple College. And so that automatically eliminates any student that's struggling to pass that test. But the OnRamps Program, there's no testing requirement, and so we can accept any student that we deem as appropriate to take the course. And the second piece is that, you know, traditionally, a college course is a semester-long, and sometimes that pace is just too much for a high school student. So the OnRamps course is stretched out over a school year, and so I'll take, we're doing statistics this year, I'll take that as an example. Students are learning statistics at the high school level, and throughout the year, they'll also be introduced to the college-level modules that kind of complement what they're learning in high school statistics, so that it's kind of scaffolding and supporting their instruction throughout the school year. And so the slower pace with a Temple High School teacher gives students a better advantage. And most importantly, at the end, they get a dual credit from the University of Texas at Austin. And so that goes on their transcript, and actually, students have a choice at the end. If they decide, I enjoyed this, but I don't want to be, to be on my college transcript, they can choose to not have that be on their transcript. Whereas, you know, with a regular dual credit, it's going on there whether they want it to or not, and so they have that choice. And the, the district is recognized for the CCMR point that the students earn for completing the, the course. And so we are seeking your approval for that agreement with University of Texas at Austin.
And even though the student may deny it to transcript college-wise, they can still earn the high school.
They still earn the high school credit. Mm-hmm.
Members, any further questions? Does require approval? Motion by Ms. Suarez. Seconded by Mrs. Myers. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The same sign opposed. The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. Item C, Facilities in Operation. Mr. Boyd, no items tonight. Okay. E, Student Service. D, Finance. Mrs. Stafford, no items tonight. And E, Student Service, Mr. Hagenberg. First is the District Audit Report.
Yes, tonight, we have the District Audit Report. And as a reminder, this is a report that's required every three years from, it's requirement from the state of Texas, and this has to be presented to the board and to the, and submitted to the school safety center. The goal is to identify potential safety and security risks, and there's a survey that is taken, and there is a lot of questionnaires and field questions at the various sites, sites and the campuses, and that's all pulled together. And the things that come out of it, there's commendations, and then there's some recommendations. As far as commendations for us on this go-around, one was our campus drills were done with the fidelity. This is the, several years in a row, our campuses have, all campuses have done all drills. And so that's a very, very positive thing. Also, our staff is, participates in professional development and are trained on all our, our drills. This year was the first time that our senior leadership team, we conduct every two months, tabletop exercises with various situations. And so we practice that at our senior leadership team meetings. Another thing that came out is we have all the committees, and they are all active. Next thing that came out, and this is very important, is that we have a relationship with the Temple Police Department that's very strong for lots, not only just the committees, but for working together and collaborating and lots of other activities. That relationship is strong. And our new building and construction and renovations, they do incorporate the safety procedures or safety features that are recommended. As far as recommendations, we are looking at expanding all those drills that we normally do on the campuses to the non-instructural facilities, so expanding that program. And also, whereas we did the drill, or the tabletop exercises at the district level, we're working on setting that structure up so that the campuses will do that at each campus with their, their campus team. Any questions on the safety and security audit results?
Any questions, members? Thank you. F is Board Committee Reports. One, Facility Committee Update. Meeting held Thursday, June 29th, 2023. Mr. Gaines.
Thank you, Mr. Posey. Meeting was called to order at 4:00 PM. The group boarded one of the new activity buses for two of the recent purchased property on Highway 93, well, sorry, the FM 93. Upon arrival at the site, Mr. John Keela and Mr. Ms. Brian Myers and Dr. Ott provided information on future developments and infrastructure improvements in the area around the future school site. The next stop was at Hector P. Garcia, look at one of the new security vestibules under construction, where Mr. Boyd and Mr. Wolf discussed the project. The final stop was at the New Girls Soccer Practice Field, where Mr. Wolf discussed the project and pointed out several improvements around the portion of the campus. Dr. Ott and Mr. Boyd discussed the future of the Cater Campus, the potential sale of Dixon, and a new Panta sculpture being donated to Meredith Dunbar. Meeting was adjourned at 5:37 PM. Our next meeting will be June 29th, 2023 at 4:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines. Item two is the Policy Committee Update. The meeting was held on Wednesday, June 28th, 2023 at 4:00 PM. The meeting was actually called to order at 4:05 PM. Update 121 was presented, and selected policy changes were highlighted and discussed. Local policy recommendations within update 121 will be presented to the full board tonight for consideration. The meeting was adjourned at 4:19 PM, and the next Policy Committee meeting is scheduled for July 26th at 4:00 PM. Item two A, item two B is consideration for approval of Board Policy Update 121. One, update 121 summary. Two, explanatory notes. Three, local policy comparison. And four, legal policy comparison. Mr. Hagenberg.
Yes, Senator, thank you. 121, this particular policy is pretty concise. It is mostly deals with relocation.
It is mostly deals with relocation of various elements. It also talks about updating various references and links that are embedded in policy. It expands and contracts various policies. In other words, it takes one policy, splits it into two, or it takes two policies and combines them into one, as well as completing and updating the table of contents. It is with the legal policy, that's law, and there's a few of them that I'll mention. And then the local policy, those are the ones that are presented for your consideration for approval tonight. First one I'll mention in the legal policy is BQ legal. And this is where it's now required that the bullying policy be included in the district improvement plan. So when we talked about that, there is an element for, an item for the bullying policy in there. Next, CCGA is, the change there is talks about homestead exemptions. This changed it from 25 to 40. And Dr. Ott just emailed some of the words from Austin today, and there's a potential that they might increase that even more so, depending on their plan. So this is where the policy where it changed it to $40,000. Next, we have CFB, and this is local policy. And this talks about the capitalization threshold. And so when we talk about capitalization, it's things that are purchased. It's either purchased as an expense, or it's purchased and it's categorized as an asset. And so here, it talks about the assets being combined as a group. And if it totals 5,000 or more, then we can categorize it as an asset rather than an expense. Just for your information, for us, we have a practice of $500. So if it's over $500, we go through that process of purchasing it and tracking it and working with it for disposal. So I expect more guidance coming from TEA and the various accounting standards for that. That's that local policy. The next local policy, CKE. Basically, it just changed the name from CKE to CKEC. So that's all, all that's happened with that one. The next legal policy, we have CLB. And this talks about the Integrated Pest Management System. And this is laws and rules from the Texas Department of Agriculture. And it talks about the IBM Coordinator and making sure that we have one. And if it changes, we have 30 days to appoint a new one. Next is CLB local. And one of the things with that Integrated Pest Management System is they now include district property in those things that are required to have all those laws and notices and requirements for when we maintain that building. In the local policy is the companion to that, and it mentions that if that residential property houses students, then yes, we're required to do all those pest management requirements for it. Next, CNC. This deals with transportation. And the old law said that when a bus stopped and it opened the, it could only open the doors so that the lights flashed when you were loading and unloading students. And part of the remote learning pieces, they added now that buses can open their doors and have the flashes going if they're distributing food or technology equipment. And again, that's sort of part of the remote learning pieces and try to promote safety for that, even though if students weren't being released from the bus. CBL, well, let's see, we did that one. CRF local. This is, in my career, this is a new one for me. Nothing changes in this one. They just had to reformat it so that their computer system could recognize it and process it. So there's no change in that. It's, but it's on our, the list of local policies. Then we have CVA local and CVB local, talking about competitive bidding and sealed competitive proposals. It just withdraws the name or the, of, or designate. So now it just designates the superintendent for that. DEA local. It clarifies some language. It changes bi-monthly to semi-monthly, and it also changes closing to closure. So those are the big pieces on that policy. EF legal. This talks about, this is one of the outcomes of the library materials piece. And it talks about harmful materials and what's obscene. And if, I'll let you read the policy yourself to see what TEA determines is harmful and obscene. But that's our, in that policy. Next, we have EIC legal. And this talks about homeless and foster care. And one of the things that's now required is that credits have to be allowed to be recorded per semester. And in this policy, and you might hear in future presentations, it's called proportionate credit. We already do that. So now it's, as far as with the homeless and foster care, now it's part of a requirement from the state. And then the last group deals with the G policies, dealing with the community and communications. They just totally reworked those several policies. And so as far as reorganizing, not any major changes. So rather than going through that, that's, as I said, they rearranged a bunch of them. So that's the G policies. Any questions?
Thank you, Eric. This does require approval. I believe, Mr. Gaines.
I move to approve the update 121 local policy changes as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Gaines.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Myers. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The same sign to oppose, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. And before we adjourn tonight, I just want to welcome aboard Monica Boyd, joining our team. Look forward to working with you for quite a while. So thank you, thank you for joining, coming with us. And also, too, members, before you leave tonight, I know we have to have a decision about hotel rooms down in Dallas for the state convention. If you could tell Monica, so that way we could reserve them by the deadline. So with that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.